This session is on civil service matters. Let us welcome the Secretary for the Civil Service and his team to the meeting. I will first give the floor to the Secretary to say a few words. And then for members who would like to speak, please press the Request to Speak button, Secretary for the Civil Service. Thank you, Chairman. Among the matters relating to the civil service in 2020-21 draft estimates of expenditure, I'd like to focus my introduction on three areas. The first item is civil service establishment. In 2020-21, the overall growth of the civil service establishment is 3.2%. The additional civil service posts are for enhancing existing services, taking forward new initiatives and meeting the manpower demand of government departments arising from practical operational needs and increased workload, so as to ease the work pressure on civil servants. About 90% of the additional manpower belongs to middle and lower ranks, covering a number of frontline grades. The government will continue to manage the civil service establishment in a prudent manner and increase manpower resources suitably based on operational needs for implementing new policy measures and enhancing existing services. The second item is increase the number of government short-term internships. In order to encourage and assist young people to make better planning and preparation before entering the job market, the government offers different short-term internships to students every year. In 2020-21, we plan to substantially increase the number of internship places from some 2,000 to almost 5,000, including inviting public organizations to provide internship places so as to increase the diversity of the program and the choices for students. The initiative will provide more students with internships, thereby enabling young people to gain work experience and at the same time deepen their understanding and knowledge of government's operations and different areas of work of the public service. The third item is about financial provisions. In the 2020-21 draft estimates of expenditure, Head 37, Department of Health, Program 7 Medical and Dental Treatment for Civil Servants is the head of expenditure that has a relatively substantial increase in provincial provision in the policy area of management of the civil service. A financial provision of above $2,420 million is proposed, representing an increase of 36.2% over the 2019-20 revised estimate. The increase is mainly for continuously improving the medical and dental services for civil servants, pensioners, and other eligible persons. About $1 billion and $17 million out of the said provision is for providing medical and dental services at families' clinics and government dental clinics respectively. Apart from meeting the operating expenses of the clinics, the provision will also be used for setting up additional specialized dental surgeries and strengthening manpower support for family clinics and government dental clinics to meet service and development needs. Also, the Department of Health will implement two new service programs in families' clinics: the Integrated Care Program for improving the quality of care for patients with diabetes, melitus, and the Stable Drug Use Pilot Program for enhancing drug safety for patients with chronic diseases and stable condition who are required to take multiple types of drugs. Regarding the payment and reimbursement of medical fees and hospital charges, the proposed allocation is about $1,350 million. Chairman, this is the end of my introduction. I welcome questions from members. Thirty members have pressed the Request to Speak button. I read the names out. Pun Xiaoping, Charles Ma, Jeremy Tam, Michael Tian, Ji Hua Te, Chan Chan Yee, Jang Lai Wan, Kock Pak Ki, Chen Chi Chuen, Lo Wai Ko, Elizabeth Kwad, Zheng Chung Tai, and Wu Chi Wei, each will have four minutes. Mr. Pun Xiaoping.
Thank you, Chairman. The Secretary said that the civil service establishment will be boosted and increased provision to improve medical services for the civil service. I welcome that. Now, I'd like to ask a question in relation to reply number 41. Now, according to your reply, for NCSE staff that have been in position for more than 10 years, there are 1,369. I'd like to ask whether you will turn them to civil servants because they have served for more than 10 years. Now, if you cannot do that, can you provide them with benefits comparable to that of the civil service? Another question relates to reply 003. Benefits of civil servants, starting from the 1st of March, Chinese medical services available for the civil service pending a review in one year's time. Now, if after your review, the response is very encouraging and all the quota is taken out, will you provide more money to boost the services? And then reply 04 for five-day weeks in the civil service. Now, you said that there will be a review every two years. About 25% of the civil servants are not able to enjoy five-day weeks. I think this is very unfair to civil servants, given that you have implemented FDWW for so long. According to the reply, departments are trying to implement a full FDWW. Take LCSD as an example. Many of them, many of their staff are enjoying FDWW, but you said that a number of criteria have to be fulfilled, but you do not have a plan and timetable for full implementation of FDWW. You only encourage communication between the management and staff unions. Now, would the government consider adjusting resources so that for civil servants that cannot enjoy FDWW yet, they can enjoy it as soon as possible? Thank you, Mr. Pun.
Regarding NCSE staff, we've always encouraged departments to fill positions that have long-term needs with civil servants instead of NCSE staff. For instance, in our draft estimates, 176 such posts will be created to replace posts that are filled by NCSE staff. So we continue to encourage departments to... Now, Mr. Pun is very concerned about NCSE staff that have served for five, 10, or 15 years. Now, we've asked departments to see whether they can be turned to civil service posts. Now, perhaps it's because of the nature of service and also the needs, perhaps they cannot be replaced for the time being. Starting from the 1st of March, we have implemented a pilot scheme for provision of Chinese medical services to our civil servants. We will review the outcome of the pilot scheme. Also gauge the views of colleagues that have used the service in deciding the way forward. And for FDWW, when we first started FDWW, there was no goal or undertaking to achieve 100% in the civil service. Because the resources required for 100% FDWW in the civil service is quite substantial. But we started with 75% of the civil servants or 75% of our colleagues are enjoying FDWW. We will see whether it can be further implemented. And the Public Service Panel has an item on this. I will communicate with members there. Mr. Charles Ma, my question relates to 009 and 012. Mass arrangement for the civil service during the epidemic and also the work-from-home arrangement for civil servants. Two weeks ago, the government reiterate a work-from-home pattern, but the arrangement was different from what was the arrangement prior to the 2nd of March. I've received complaints from many civil servants that in fact they are working for three, four, or five days a week, and they're not given any masks. I wrote to the S4CS, and the reply I got after two weeks was it was the individual department's division decision. I'm worried some heads of departments dare not allow their staff to work from home because other departments have their staff returning to office to work. Now, for many urgent... Now, you refer to urgent and essential services, but there are many IT staff. They complained to me that the duties are not urgent and essential. That's only for me to quote an example. Now, just not long ago, there was an incident involving Fu Zhong. And then they said that they were still required to work, although there was already a confirmed case there. Luckily, the epidemic did not spread. And then Mr. Pan Na Chen said that perhaps more stringent measures have to be taken. There might be a total lockdown of the city. Now, I think the government should take the lead, and you should practice what you preach. Some civil servants told me yesterday or today there is only now that they could receive a token for assessing the government's internal mail at home. No wonder previously they were not allowed to work from home. For some IT companies, they have never returned to office since after the Lunar New Year, and everything is operating normally. So we can see how unprepared the government is. Now, in the coming days, how are you to give more resources to our civil servants so that they can really work from home in terms of tokens and working with mobile phones, this and that? Will you do that as soon as possible? And you should work out the guidelines carefully, what constitutes urgent and essential business so that your departments can really have a standardized approach?
To work from home, I think you know that the main objective is to prevent the threat of the infection and to fight the epidemic. Well, this is our topmost priority for the government. So under such a principle, all departments have to provide essential services and limited services. Can you not tell us how many staff members have to go to work three, four, and five days a week? Well, let me tell you. Individual departments know clearly what's meant by urgent and essential services. We have guidelines for departments. They have to take into account the need to strike a balance between their work as well as the effort to stop and prevent the infection. So departments will make adjustments in relation to the work-from-home arrangements. We cannot be rigid, but it is obvious that it is failing. Please do not waste our time. Are you going to set aside more resources to provide the technical support and come up with guidelines because it has failed? I believe that the guidelines are very clear, very clear. Mr. Ma, now if you talk about the technological support as to whether more can be done, I think individual departments will see how much... Yes, Secretary, please continue. Departments will consider the IT support needed. If they need more resources, we'll certainly tie in with the needs. Mr. Jeremy Tam, four minutes.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to follow up on CSP 014. And that's about the case of the executive officers. That's about their promotion. You have given us a reply. For the year 2018-2019, 140 were promoted. You have also set out the breakdown figures for the EO grade at different ranks. Well, as far as the promotion is concerned, I think attention has to be paid to the number of postings that they have been given. You have said that it is not relevant, but I'm sure if you have more postings and if you've got a variety of experience, then you'll be conducive to their promotion. I did ask a question about their postings. I would like to know whether there has been any delays. In the past, the case was serious. It was said that you have to create postings so as to give them the opportunities to have rotation. And the posts were created for this general grade. This may not be directly relevant, but I think it is related. I want to know whether their prospects have improved. For EO2 to be promoted to EO1, I think there isn't any problem with the posting. They would have been covered in the first few years. But then for others, I think in the past, the case was unsatisfactory. I want to know whether there has been some improvement. Secretary, if I may briefly talk about the picture, and then my colleague will supplement. Now, for the management and promotion of EOs, I understand that earlier on, we had a meeting with Mr. Jeremy Tam so as to study the matter of concern to him. For the estimates this year, we have already set up our arrangements in relation to the manpower needed for the management of EO grade as well as other general grades. I would like to defer to Mr. Chen to take up the question. Mr. Chen is the head of grade. Well, in relation to the postings of EOs, we do take it seriously. As Mr. Tam had said, postings would be important for their career development. In the past, we did spend a lot of efforts in making the posting arrangements. As the Secretary has said, we have got a PO as well as a CEO to take care of this matter, hoping that the postings will be better arranged. I haven't got the detailed information with me, but then looking at the picture in the previous year, I don't think sort of there was any worsening. We are still working hard. For the EO grade, I think from the figures, you can see that the growth is quite significant. Chair, I don't want to overrun. You told us that it hasn't worsened, but my question was, any improvement? Now, you have created two posts. I want to know, instead of just not having worsened, has there been any improvement? After today's meeting, please come up with information in a table form so as to tell whether the arrangements have become more reasonable, whether there has been an improvement. Secretary, yes, we'll go back to check if there is any further information to be made available. Mr. Michael Tian, four minutes.
I would like to ask a question concerning question 0374. Well, I want to explore the concepts rather than the detailed figures. That's about the establishment. 0374. That's about the establishment of the civil service. Well, if you haven't got that with you, let me sort of explain the matter. Well, I think the establishment has grown, in particular since 2018. 6,700 have been added, an increase of 3.7%. In year 2020, you intend to increase 6,000 more. That is 3.1%. On average, for a number of years, you are increasing 1600. But then since 2018, the average has been 4,800. Well, since Anthony Leung, who was the FS in year 2001, have seen changes in the numbers. The peak was 200,000, and then in year 2007, it was down to 160,000. But in recent years, you have made significant increases. This is worrying. I'm afraid that this is not going to sustain. Now, let me show you this graph. Maybe you haven't seen it. That covers the past two decades, covering 1998 as up to now. For the bars, the vertical bars, that's the absolute number. So you can see for yourself. In year 2005, all the way up to 2010, we have the smallest establishment. For the blue line, that's the level of trust on the part of the public in the government. For the red line, that's the level of trust in the central government. Now, when I looked at this graph, I asked myself this question. When we have the fewest number of civil servants, and generally speaking, we had the highest level of trust in both the SARG and the central government. Now, as to this part of the graph, the number of civil servants is increasing, and yet the level of trust in the SARG as well as the central government has been falling. You know, I'd like to find out about the cause and effect. So what is the message coming out from this? Does it mean that by having a larger establishment, it doesn't mean that the government is doing a good job? While on the contrary, fewer civil servants, but they're more capable, they get the trust of the public. Now, if you provide good service, then the public would be happy, they're satisfied, and they would have more trust in the government. Now, judging from this graph, it's very odd. If you're adding more to the establishment, and yet the satisfaction level is dropping, then we are not getting value for money. So what is your sort of reaction to this sharing? I don't have good eyesight, but basically, I have listened to Mr. Michael Tian in relation to his analysis. Well, if you talked about an opinion poll about the level of trust in the government, I think many factors are at play. Just now, you try to base your analysis on the changes in the size of the civil service establishment. I don't actually think that there is a cause and effect sort of relationship. Now, when there is an increase in the demand for a service and when we need to launch new services, new policies, we need to increase our establishment. And then with that, that may lead to more new policies and new services. Well, of course, in the community, there is this thing that the more work you take on, the more likely that you will commit mistakes, and then the more likely that you'll get criticized. So maybe there's a way to explain the sort of graph that he is holding up. But I don't think it can really explain the sort of observation. Maybe it is a sort of biased or far from comprehensive analysis. Mr. Chu, four minutes. I think he has answered your question, Mr. Tian. Thank you, Chair. Two parts to my question. First of all, that's about the establishment for the police. Well, for this year, you intend to add 2,543 more. So they're getting the largest increase. I hope the public won't have the wrong understanding that it is merely adding 2,543 more. That doesn't mean recruiting that more. It's in fact a matter of the number of wastage that would be important as well. Well, in fact, on a yearly basis, the wastage rate is 1,700. For them to increase the establishment by 2,543 in the coming financial year, they need to recruit 4,243 more. When we look at the past recruitment figures and bearing in mind the fact that retired policemen would be asked to rejoin the police force, there would still be a difference of 1,000 or so posts. Secretary, according to the Public Order Ordinance, the chief executive may ask the commissioner to appoint anybody to become a special constable. Now, if the CP has appointed 2,000 armed policemen from the mainland to come to Hong Kong to act as special constables, then for the 2,000 special constables, I want to know whether the CSP would regard them as civil servants? That's the first question. My second question. For the past year, I think everybody knows that the police force as well as ARTK are the departments that have clocked up their highest number of overtime hours. Now, of course, the commissioner will tell us that he expects a lot of unrest in the coming year. And so for the previous year, since a lot of overtime work was engaged, and so he has to recruit more police officers this year to cope with the workload. If that's the logic, what about the ARTK? I think both would go hand in hand. You need more policemen to deal with the events, and of course, more journalists would need to cover the events. Now, for police force, an increase of manpower by 7%, but for ARTK, an increase of 0.8% only. So, Secretary, what happened was that the ARTK didn't ask for an increase of manpower to correspond or in proportion to the expected increase in events to be covered or is because of something else? Thank you, Mr. Chu. For the first question, for the CP or for the police force to appoint any law enforcement agency officers to be policemen, they must be Hong Kong residents. So it is out of the question that there would be appointments as outlined by Mr. Chu. In other words, he must have lived in Hong Kong for seven years. Yes, a permanent resident of Hong Kong. As to the second part of your question, and that's about the police force as well as the ARTK in relation to their manpower levels, I don't think I can comment on the internal deliberation of their departmental needs. I think it's better for the policy bureaus and departments to explain the matter to you during the respective FC sessions.
Please return the microphone to Mr. Chu. Now, from the CSP's point of view, if we can expect unrest in society the coming year, then the discrepancy in manpower increase between two departments shouldn't be that big. Secretary, when it comes to additional manpower and proposals to establishment, we deal with them in a very prudent manner. Mr. Ronik Chen, my question relates to 020 and 001. Now, in the Secretary's reply, I see that under the CSTDI, there are training sponsorship scheme to sponsor civil servants at MPS 49 or below to pursue continuous study. In 2017, 18, and 2018, 19, there are both 650 and 90, 30 approved applications respectively. There is said that 1% of the applications. I'd like to ask, have you assessed how come the success rate is so low? Is it because you're very stringent? Is it because you're very stringent restrictions on um on your um um application approval? And then uh within the civil service, you promote continuous learning. So apart from this training sponsorship scheme, do you have other resources and incentives to encourage uh the civil service to add value so as to enhance the quality of service by the team? And uh question number O O two. Now, it is said that uh the C S B will arrange uh for civil servants to join uh different programs um such as some uh in areas of B and I initiative and Guangzhou Macabre Bridge Development, uh G B A Development, et cetera. Now, in twenty nineteen twenty, about two thousand two hundred civil servants attended national study programs, and I think the number is limited. Let you know whether they uh took the courses locally or in the mainland on um matters related to national policies such as G B A development. From time to time, there will be updates and adjustment. I'd like to know whether refreshers courses will be available. Will you give them a refresher training after a few years so that they can uh keep abreast of with latest developments? Secretary, thank you. Uh regarding uh figures on a continuous learning. Now, uh to be eligible for a sponsorship, uh the uh program needs to be work-related. So uh if a particular year, the applications complied with the um requirements, then the success rate may be higher. But in another year, if applications do not approve uh do not comply with the uh criteria, then the success rate may be lower. And for training in things like um national matters and the basic law, we have got local training. And we also employ experts from outside the government to train the civil service. We do not just rely on our in-house uh staff of C S T D I, there are about twenty odd of them. Perhaps uh uh the Deputy Secretary has something to add, Mister Chen. Thank you.
Uh for training on uh national matters, national studies, we have twenty five training officers. Some of them are responsible for teaching these uh programs. But as said by the secretary, in addition to our training officers, we also employ experts and academics from Hong Kong or from overseas uh to provide training on national policies. So we do not just rely on the twenty five training officers we have. For twenty twenty, we intend uh to train twenty two thousand. Um I mean, we want to provide twenty two thousand training places for the civil service. Therefore, we do not just rely on in-house strength. Doctor Zhang Li one, uh C S B O six two. In the past three years, uh for the number of civil service that have been uh punished for uh breaching uh disciplinary matters, seven hundred and eleven in uh twenty eighteen and five hundred ninety three in twenty nineteen. A number of uh case, number of conviction, a loss of pension benefits. In twenty nineteen, there were only thirteen cases. So, I'd like to know, what is your, what are your internal guidelines? Who should uh be uh interdicted and who should lose their pension benefits? Secretary, thank you.
Well, uh uh that is based on our civil service regulations and pensions-related regulations. For example, for serious offenses, if the C E is confirmed, has confirmed that that uh would uh affect the government's reputation or people's uh confidence in the civil service. So it is for the Chief Executive to to decide who should be dismissed and who uh should be stripped of uh his pension benefits. Now, for uh dismissal, uh we have to go through procedures. Do you have standard operational procedures? Now, uh for dismissal, formal procedures have to be uh gone through with formal disciplinary action. And uh the Public Service Commission Disciplinary Secretariat will have uh to carry out hearings. So is it done by you? No, the Secretary on Civil Service Discipline will have internal hearings and is similar to a legal procedures. Both parties can be legally represented. Do you have any uh figures on uh the number of civil servants that have lost their pension benefits? Meaning they have lost their pension entitlements, so and so forth. I don't have such information with me. Now, let me see if I can supplement afterwards. Before the year two thousand, uh once you uh lost your pension benefits, you lost everything. And as a result, some civil servants were very cautious uh when they are near their retirement to avoid making mistakes um con- or misconducts. After two thousand, uh the pension benefits will not be affected. But will the government's contributions to uh the uh civil service pension fund be affected? Now, we act according to the law, of course. Before two thousand, uh we had uh pension benefits. After two thousand, uh this is no longer a means for serious breach of um conduct, well, uh civil servants can be dismissed. As far as I understand, now, let me see if my call is anything to uh supplement. We do not have the right to uh remove the government's contributions to uh his uh civil service pension fund. I hope the secretary can provide clear guidelines so that all civil servants know what the system is. Because uh currently appears that a bunch of people will determine uh the retirement treatment or benefits of um these civil servants. We will deal with each and every case very seriously. We will end at uh eleven twenty five, Feast of Koka K. Chen Chi Chin, Loai Kwat, Elizabeth Kwat, I think we cannot move, so um uh reach Doctor Zhang Chong Tai. Doctor K K Kwat. Um reply number O two two and O three nine. Secretary, in the recent uh poll, um the score for the police was two point six and half of them gave them zero and sixty eight point six percent of the respondents uh responded that the police should be disbanded. Now, the police has the greatest cases of corruption or misconduct among all discipline services. Now, from June last year to the twenty ninth of um uh twenty second of February, now forty two uh police officers have been prosecuted, convicted, and uh suspended from service. So uh the success rate of prosecution of a duty of J is less than forty percent, rather outranges. Now, here comes the problem. Many of these civil servants were uh subject to um unlawful arrests and they were uh inter- uh dictated at once. However, last year, the figure was very uh appalling. There were over two hundred eighteen uh were dismissed and fifty two subject to other uh punishment and summary, uh that is a reprimand one hundred thirty six. A big surge from seventy five from the previous year. Dismissal uh um a three forty increase. In the first half of this year, ten already. This goes to show that the equality of police officers, whether we talk about a corruption or other disciplinary misconduct, their standard is poor. So you see, this government has double standards. For those who took part in social events, although uh Carrie Lam is the cause of all these things, uh the um government is adopting a very draconian approach. As for the uh s- police, they are imperial lords. Take a police constable in Kuichong, he uh was on a police motorcycle um charging at people. However, he was only um suspended from duty for a short while, and uh he was only suspended from frontline work. Now, uh police officers only subject to reprimand. Do you think uh there is anything wrong with this? If this is not double standard, for those who involved in serious disciplinary um conduct, shouldn't you interdict first, first, just like the treatment to other civil servants? If not, for the forty odd civil servants that have been interdicted now, isn't it very unfair? Three questions. Secretary.
Regarding the situation of the police, I hope um you wouldn't uh not use, wear a tainted glass and uh say that they uh they arrest people um arbitrarily.
From the civil service bureau's point of view, we apply the same standard to all civil servants. Whether we are talking about a police officer or civilian a staff member, we will follow up all um conduct or disciplinary matters of our colleagues in a serious um manner. It said that after reprimanding, uh no more action will be taken as explained by the C P. Reprimand is just an immediate means to stop misconduct on the part of uh the officers concerned. There may be other follow-up actions. For instance, uh uh disciplinary investigation. So depending on the circumstances. So to put it simply, we adopt the same standard for all civil servants, whether uh they are in the civilian grades or a disciplined officer.
Mister Ray Chen, um C S B zero zero one. That's about um the J R of a civil servant's case. Well, uh the government had lost in the final appeal last year. That is in relation to the senior immigration officer who took the government to court. Now, according to the judgment of the court, um his spouse would be entitled to the welfare benefits. Now, according to the government's reply, it is said that um the government uh has granted development benefits to the spouse of the officer according to the court order and the employment terms of the officer. I've checked with him. He said that as long as he uh gave the name of his husband, um the benefits will be given uh to him. Um now, it is said that the government will also reveal details of the administrative arrangements relating to social benefits to ensure compliance with the court order of the C F A. Now, we are told that they aren't too sure about the uh changes in the policy. Other than medical benefits, what other benefits would be um extended to the uh same-sex partners? At the end of this month, um it is said that ten civil servants have made inquiries on the matters concerned. So it's merely a matter of making inquiries. So other than the husband of this uh male senior immigration officer, uh whose name has been given and who has been covered by the benefits, uh I don't know um who else uh have been covered. And then we can see from this reply that the administration didn't uh take the initiative to inform all the civil servants. If somebody has read the news story, then he will take the initiative to ask questions. If not, then he would not have known that there has been a change in the policy. So in the past, the U S Army had got this, don't ask, don't tell. If you are a member of the sexual minority group, you don't tell me and I don't ask you and everything would be fine. Now, for the C S B, C S C S, I think it's a matter of not ask, not tell. If you don't ask, I won't tell you. If you come to ask me, I'll tell you. So my question is, other than medical benefits, what other related benefits will be extended to the same-sex uh spouses? Can they apply for marriage quarters? Say for example, are you going to take the initiative to tell all the civil servants that there has been such a policy change, instead of waiting for them to come forward to ask questions? So please uh set out in a list as to what changes have been made. That is, if you have a same-sex partner, uh if you're married to a same-sex partner, uh what other uh benefits uh will be extended? Secretary. For the court order handed down by the C F A Chairman, I think you know that we have already given the social benefits to that officer. Now, the C F A has already ruled in favor of the um applicant. But then as to the impact, I think it is extensive in relation to the social benefits. So we need to carry out an overall review. Says to check how we should go about this matter. We know that there are civil servants who might have um entered into a marriage with a same-sex partner. Their um employment conditions may not be similar to the officer in this case. So we are studying the policy implications. We try to see whether we need to revise our administrative arrangements. Once this is completed, we will instantly inform the welfare departments and the welfare civil servants, and we will announce the details. Mister Ray Chen asked me whether I knew how many civil servants um would like to make a declaration uh in relation to this matter. Well, currently, the civil service regulations do not ask for the declaration of uh same-sex marriage. So we do not know how many civil servants have entered into marriage with a same-sex partner. So um all we can tell is that we have received inquiries from about ten civil servants. Sorry, speaker is off mic. Sorry, speaker is off mic. Is that the case, S C S? We will look at the cases one by one. Sorry, speaker is off mic. If the case is exactly the same as the applicant, then the same arrangement should be extended to him or her. Doctor Lu Wei Guang.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to follow on reply C S B zero three eight. I ask this question, that is, for the additional number of civil service posts, how many of them would be related to uh construction and related engineering professions? Uh details have been set out in the reply. For the year twenty twenty to twenty one, there are three hundred nineteen posts in the welfare grades that have been approved uh a matter of five point five percent. In the previous years, I think the government has been very pragmatic. That is, for the government to translate the policies into projects that benefit the livelihood, a lot of them would be related to construction and engineering. And we are, and we have seen an increase in the manpower needed. Now, my question is, against the background of the outbreak of the infectious disease, the entire construction industry is facing a lot of problems. Our trade partners in Europe and America are suffering from a serious outbreak. So, our construction and engineering sectors are under huge pressure. Therefore, I believe that we need to promote infrastructural projects and public works projects. This has been the overseas experience as well. That is, while we're fighting the outbreak, well, we need to do more in this regard and that would also pave the way for future development. For the private sector, while we having this crisis, we may not be able to recruit fresh graduates to work as young engineers. So, I think the government has to be flexible and the government should sort of take them on so that they won't lose the chance to enter the profession. When the F S came here to exchange views with us, I said that the government has not been up to the standard in terms of electronic government. Now, many civil servants would like to work from home. But then, they have been surprised to find that it is difficult to have e-government services, say, for example, approval of electronic plans, etc. It is found that the support is not adequate. So, you need to work harder in this regard. I'd like to get a reply from the secretary. Secretary. Thank you, Mr. Kwok or Dr., sorry, thank you, Dr. Lo, for your questions. Yes, we'd like to launch more profit works projects. Chairman, at the F C meetings, I'd like to appeal to members to work harder and approve more profit works projects. I'm sure in this way, the construction and engineering sectors can keep their jobs and they will have their livelihood safeguarded significantly. As to e-government, earlier on, when I answered the question about work from home, I said that probably there is room for improvement. We will talk to our relevant IT professionals, as was the Innovation Technology Commission, to explore ways to work harder so that in terms of technology, etc., our civil servants can make greater use of the computer systems to provide e-government service. At the same time, the public would find it more friendly to use our e-government service. Dr. Elizabeth Kwok, four minutes.
If I may, follow up on zero-three-five. A question asked by Mr. Ri-Li. I think it is said that, under the framework of the Basic Law and the Civil Service Code, it has consistently been the duty of civil servants to uphold the Basic Law and be loyal to the Hong Kong SAR. Article nineteen of the Basic Law states that public servants must be dedicated to their duties and be responsible to the government of the Hong Kong SAR. The code also clearly requires that civil servants must observe the Hong Kong SAR government with total loyalty, be committed to rule of law, and exercise executive powers in compliance with Basic Law and the laws of Hong Kong sector. Last year, there was this protest against the amendment to the Fugitive Offenders Ordinance. Many civil servants took part in the lawful events. Some have made public comments that would discredit the Hong Kong government and some have even asked for the independence of Hong Kong. And recently, there was an R H K reporter during an interview with a WHO official breached the principle of One China. Well, the secretary has already said that this would be a problem. And in fact, the secretary has also said that the director broadcasting, as the head of the R H K, should look into the matter and be responsible. Now, civil servants have been breaching the requirements. As the SCS, what are you going to do to make sure that civil servants know that they need to abide by the Civil Service Code? And what penalties would ensue? Is it because the code is unclear, so civil servants do not know that? They need to uphold the Basic Law and have to uphold the principle of One China? Secretary. When civil servants express their views or when they take part in public events, we have got clear guidelines. For the Civil Service Code, but in fact, upon entry into the civil service, a copy would have been given to the civil servants. And for the training programs, civil servants have been reminded of the Civil Service Code. Now, in the Civil Service Code, civil servants are reminded to be people of integrity, free from corruption, impartial, unbiased, politically neutral, committed to the rule of law, etc. It is clear. When we come to the management of civil servants, if it is found that civil servants have breached the law or have breached the codes, we will deal with them, will discipline them. It depends on the nature of the breach or the irregularity. If they are a member of a particular department, then first of all, the head of department will follow up on the case. If necessary, that is, if we need to resort to a formal disciplinary action, then our bureau will intervene and will follow on individual cases. Mr. Chairman, Dr. Kwok said that many civil servants were in such a sort of scenario. I think we need to be objective and look at the facts. For civil servants taking part in unlawful activities and arrested, I think the total number is only forty-plus. For the entire establishment, we have one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand. So, they account for a small number. The majority of the civil servants abide by the rule of being politically neutral and be committed to the rule of law. Dr. Zheng Chong-tai, zero-two-seven and zero-two-four-five. I'm concerned about the morale of the civil servants and their mental health. Well, in the past week, a tragedy occurred, took place. From the figures, I'm not sure if the secretary has taken it seriously in relation to the wave of departure from the civil service. Year twenty-eighteen-nineteen, one-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-three, seventeen-eighteen, one-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-three, sixteen-seventeen, one-thousand-fifty-two, during the C Y L administration, one-thousand-fifty-six, and then the year before that, eight-hundred-and-ninety-three. Ten years ago, five-hundred-and-twenty-three, two-thousand-six, nine-hundred, four-hundred-and-eleven, two-thousand-five, three-hundred-and-twenty-six. In the past ten, fifteen years, instead of having three percent as the termination of service rate, now it is five percent. I think in the coming year, there will be more than one-thousand-five-hundred civil servants leaving the civil service. Secretary, have you sort of taken it seriously? Well, civil servants are supposed to have an iron rice bowl job. How come that there is such a wave, such a surge in the number of civil servants leaving the government? Secretary, I'm afraid your member has exaggerated the figures. The majority of people leaving the civil service are retirees. Resignation is the main reason. No, no, I'm getting the figures for resignation. Let me finish first. For resignation, the majority of them did so during the probation period. Well, we have got two different tables. For twenty-eighteen-nineteen, nine-hundred-and-seventy-five, twenty-seventeen, eight-hundred-and-sixty-four, and then twenty-sixteen-seventeen, six-hundred-and-fifty-two. You gave us the figures in relation to the reason of wastage. But in fact, I'm focusing on the number of resignations. You can't just look at the figures themselves. I'm asking you why. I tried to explain to Dr. Zheng. Let him finish first.
Well, the number of resignations is always low, always less than one percent, less than one percent. That's the rate of resignation. It shows that, as far as resignation is concerned, it may not be as alarming as outlined by Dr. Zheng. But nevertheless, we are still concerned that in, we are concerned about the reason of resignation in individual cases. In other words, we do follow on the colleagues leaving the civil service. We interviewed the departing civil servants. And then, for reason of wastage, for the reasons of resignation, some of them have left during probation, and this is understandable. Please answer the question directly. If you don't take it seriously, it's fine. If you only ask a question at the time of resignation, that would have been too late. Now, recently, about this case, that somebody would rather die than remain as a civil servant. That's a very serious issue.
I think the question to ask is, how many colleagues under your management are unhappy and they were rather, they do not want to stay? Time is up, you have overrun by a few minutes. Now, we do care for the situation faced by colleagues at work. If they are under pressure, we have a counseling hotline to help. Thank you, time is up. We will start at eleven-thirty-five again. Please be punctual.